I'd like to call to order the regular-
A formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for December the 3rd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Salee.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Item two, proclamations. We have one proclamation to read tonight. Proclaiming Human Rights Day. Whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to the pursuit of equality, dignity, and justice for all, and whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights asserts recognition of the inherent dignity of the and of the equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family as the foundation of freedom, justice, and peace, and whereas freedom of opinion and freedom of expression are fundamental human rights protected in Article 19 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and given legal force through all major international and regional human rights treaties, and whereas the scope of the right of to freedom of expression is broad, the right to freedom of expression is not an absolute right, and whereas hate speech is an intense and irrational emotion of contempt, hostility, and detestation towards an individual or group, an awareness of nonviolent principles and practices is a powerful way to heal and transform our lives and communities, to recognize the dignity and worth of every human being, and to promote peace and harmony among all people, and whereas it takes a community together to pledge to stand up to all forms of hate, bigotry, and bullying, to not stay silent in the face of intolerance based on race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, or any other identity, and whereas creating dialogue and new relationships is really what makes this effort meaningful, and whereas the Iowa City Human Rights Commission, the Iowa City Police Department, the Johnson County Sheriff's Office, the University of Iowa, and the Iowa United Nations Association worked together to produce Unite, Don't Fight! an informational brochure explaining how our community can take a stand against hate speech. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim December the 10th, 2019, to be Human Rights Day in Iowa City, Iowa, and encourage all residents to join together to fight against hate in our community. I think there are two people who are going to accept this proclamation, Jo and Andrea. Could you come up, please? Or just Andrea?
That's me. Jo.
Please state your name, Andrea, and sign in, I guess. We have to do that, right? No, just state your name.
State my name for the record.
Yeah.
Andrea Cohen. Mayor, councilors, thank you. On October 31st, 2018, a hate group stood on Ancrey Walkway, not far from where Iowa UNA stood collecting product and money for our Empower Her campaign, partnering with people and organizations around the state on donation drives for feminine hygiene products and financial support for women and girls locally and globally. After a while, a crowd of university students formed around the hate speech group, engaging in vain in trying to out-debate them. I asked a member of the hate group to respect the views of others. The young woman launched into a tirade of hate for others. I stood there speechless. That feeling of powerlessness motivated this hate speech brochure, which you'll all get a copy, and it's available on the iowacity.gov website and if you call the Human Rights Commission. Its aim is to educate, to provide first steps if confronted by hate speech, and to urge the city community to stand up to hate speech. Profound thanks go to the Subcommittee of the Iowa City Human Rights Commission, Kathy McGinnis, Bijou Maliabo, and Joe Coulter, Iowa UNA interns Ryan Liparsky and Alona Montgomery, Captain Denise Brotherton of the Iowa City Police Department, Detective Sergeant Brad Conkel of the Johnson County Sheriff's Office, and Nikki Hodas and Tabitha Wiggins of the University of Iowa Office of Dean of Students. We cared and worked hard. Thank you also to Stephanie Bowers for her unwavering support, and to Omna Hyder for her editing and design skills making the hate speech look really good. The rhetoric of hate. During the Nazi regime from 1933 to 1945, Hitler used words to disseminate hate, creating prejudice and intolerance against Jews, which ultimately resulted in deaths of 6 million Jewish men, women, and children, including my grandparents. Further attacks focused on gays, Roma, and Cinti, the physically and mentally disabled; in short, anyone targeted as non-Aryan. Cultivated hatred. The Rwandan genocide was preceded by the radio station RTLM, allied with leaders of the government, inciting Hutus against the Tutsi minority, repeatedly describing the latter as Inyanzi or cockroaches, and as Inzoki or snakes, urging its listeners to exterminate the cockroaches. Dehumanization. People are easily influenced. The words people use and the way they say them have profound effect on us. They can also tap into our desire to fit in with the crowd. If people are told that the majority of other people are doing something, or believe in something, then some, though not all, will follow suit to avoid being different, or singled out, or ostracized. Before there's a hate crime, there's hate speech. Words are like bullets. They can kill the soul. Hate speech is an attack on everything that makes someone who she is: religion, ethnicity, nationality, race, color of eyes, skin, hair, descent, gender. One of the ways to fight hate speech is through social cohesion, working together to educate and mobilize all community members to turn the word "speech" into a verb of positive action. When our social infrastructure is robust, it fosters contact, mutual support, and collaboration among friends and neighbors. When degraded, it inhibits social activity, leaving people to fend for themselves. The social glue comes undone. If words can propagate hate, they can also be used to spread love, tolerance, and understanding. They can be used to promote community cohesion and the belief that even if you don't agree with someone's ideals or subscribe to their beliefs, you can respect them or live alongside them in harmony. No one should ever feel as tongue-tied as I did that Halloween in 2018, when confronted with the vehemence of hateful words. No one should suffer after being bullied by painful words. It is my profound hope that our hate speech brochure signals the start of a community speaking tolerance and understanding. On a personal note, I just wanted to say it has been a pleasure living in Iowa City, an honor working on the Human Rights Commission, and rewarding working with the city as an executive director of the Iowa United Nations Association. We are off home to the Netherlands at the end of the month. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item three, well, actually, items three through seven, which is the consent calendar. I'd like to invite a motion to approve items three through seven as amended, which involves pulling item 6C for separate consideration, and deferring items 6K, 6L, and 6M.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Salee. Discussion. I wanted to mention, actually to call out, to name three items. So one is item 6F, which is the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2019, a resolution urging the United States Congress to enact the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2019. Also, I wanted to mention item 6J, which has to do with amending the budget of positions in the Neighborhood Services Division by adding 1.63 Full-Time Equivalent Housing Program Assistant Position, because we've got 60 new housing vouchers from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for people with disabilities currently experiencing homelessness, previously experienced homelessness, and currently a client in permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing project, or those at risk of experiencing homelessness. So I'm very pleased about those additional vouchers. And last, I wanted to name the, where's this other item, 6P, which is a methane feasibility study. We're going to be contracting with an engineering company to provide engineering consultant services for a methane feasibility study project that has to do with our landfill and our wastewater treatment plant. And some of you already know that methane is a very intense global warming gas, so if we can control our emissions of it, we're helping out in the general challenge having to do with climate action. So there's those things. Any further discussion on the part, anybody in the public want to speak to any one of these items that are in the consent calendar? Jamie, did you? Please state your name and write it down as well, Jamie.
So my name is James McCoy, and I'm the endorsements coordinator for the Iowa City Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby, and I wanted to thank the Iowa City Council for its previous endorsement of the Carbon Fee and Dividend Concept and your receptiveness to supporting the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividends Act. The resolution being considered tonight is for support of HR 763, which is the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividends Act, which took the previous council-endorsed concept and converted it into an actual bill through the sausage-making process of bipartisan negotiation. As I previously shared with John Thomas, the result of this is actually very good sausage. The bill likely has broader appeal than the original concept by exempting farm and military fuels without significantly diminishing its effectiveness. It has built-in evaluation mechanisms to ensure it's achieving its purpose. It's not the whole solution, but it's a significant step in solving the climate crisis. And the Iowa City Climates, excuse me, this Iowa City Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby enthusiastically supports the adoption of this resolution. Thanks to you all.
Thank you, Jamie. Would anybody else like to address any other topic that's in this consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one, council discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Um, yes. And we're going to discuss, like, 6C. We can discuss, yes.
Yes. Yes. Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to approve item 6C, Personnel Policies Update, November 2019? This is a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 17-198 and adopting updated personnel policies.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Teague. Discussion.
First, I'd like to say with all due respect, I appreciate the memo we received from Jeff Fruehmann, but I just think it would be wrong for us as a council at this time to sign off on this without the whole picture and rationale for changes and input from the union. I, this was not resolved to my satisfaction with the concerns I voiced at the last meeting, and I'm disappointed to see that it's presented again with a memo dated 11/25 from HR stating changes were shared with AFSMI with an offer to meet and discuss changes. But that was, that was last Monday, which was almost a week after when it was first requested that, that this be shared with, with the union. And it also was the Monday before the holiday, and so the union didn't really have a chance to reply, because that was Monday before the Tuesday, which then packet information was due on the Wednesday, that, and then there was the holiday. That gave them very little time to respond to this, and I would like to see that they have more input in this, because that's just, that's not acceptable. That was not the request that, that we'd asked. The summary we got in the resolution presented us listed what was referred to as the key changes, which contain new articles, but my experience, which I've negotiated many contracts and read and looked between the lines in many personnel policy books and manuals to look further into any and all the changes, and as I was looking, because what we're being asked to do is pass the resolution that adopts these updated personnel policies, but not all of them are listed. We weren't given all of the information to approve of this. One of them stood out for me that I, that I saw that especially people who've run for office will appreciate this, was page 19, which is now on page 10. Previously read, "An employee who becomes a candidate for public office shall, upon request, be given a leave of absence without pay." The new wording is, "An employee who becomes a candidate for public office may request a leave of absence without pay." That's a very different statement than what was previously. And those are the kinds of things that I'm finding as I comb through this new manual. And so I, I just, I'm sorry, I just cannot sign off of this until we get all of the information, the changes, the rationale behind the changes, and input, further input from the, from the union.
I agree with you, Pauline, because that's what the main reason for delaying this is to contact the unions and let the union review it. And if there is change, why, they don't want to give a chance to the union to review it? Maybe that you did, but the timing wasn't enough. I hope we can defer this again, and we give them more time to review, because this is have to go, if there is a minor change, the union have to know there is a minor change, and if they are agreed to this minor change or not. I hope we can defer it again and give them a chance to review it.
Jeff, what's the staff's perspective?
Yeah, I just want to say, I did exactly what I said I was going to do at the last meeting. The memo is dated the 25th. On the 20th, which is the day after the meeting, I contacted the union and offered to meet. Okay? So it wasn't a situation of me waiting until the day before the holiday, or a couple days before the holiday. AFSMI was fully aware of this. They requested the deferral, so it's not like they just found out about this before Thanksgiving. So I don't think the way that you described that was, was very fair to how staff handled it. At the meeting, we described exactly how we were going to handle it. We were going to offer to meet with the union, which we did the very next morning after the meeting, and then we have to get the packet out. We said we were going to put it back on the agenda. I told you, I feel this is routine changes. If I felt there was anything significant, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hide that. I hope you know me better to know, I wouldn't try to slip something in here that's going to radically, you know, change our personnel policies. If I didn't feel it was routine, we wouldn't have put it on the next one. But I told you at the meeting that we feel this is routine, we're happy to give the union a chance to comment. As of the packet date, we didn't, we didn't get any comments, so my choice was continue to hold it, or follow through on what I said I was going to do, which is put it back on. So if you want to defer it, that's fine. If you want us to negotiate personnel policies, which is highly unusual, that's fine. What I suggest, and what I think is appropriate in this case, is that you consider the personnel policies on the merits of the personnel policies, and you can always change them. And I've communicated to the union, and I'll communicate to the other two unions, and I'll communicate to non-union employees, that I'm more than willing to sit down and discuss any of these policies. And I think the employees know me well enough to know that I'm very approachable and open to these discussions. So I think I followed through on what I said I was going to do. I recommend you pass these, and then if concerns are raised, come back and consider changes. But I don't think it's appropriate to continue to defer and set up a situation in which we're negotiating. This isn't a collective bargaining agreement. These are routine changes. This wasn't a, a from-scratch document or brand-new policies that we were, we were putting out. I can respond, and I had the same conversation. The union brought up their concern today on the leave without pay issue. I can respond to that. If you'd like to go into details on any one of these, I'm happy to do that today. There's a very reasonable explanation, I think you'll find, for the change in that language. And by the way, that language doesn't imply to the AFSMI employees, because they have a collective bargaining agreement with, has language that trumps the personnel policies.
You just said that this is routine, and you repeated the same thing that you said last meeting, and we also, after you said it, we said, okay, let the union see it, and just negotiate it, and after that, they can come back to us. But I, I think they just feel like there is no time. Then, did they ask you for more time? Have they?
Yes, they asked today. I got a, I got a note this morning to meet, and I met with them probably within an hour, hour and a half. I made time on my schedule to meet with them, and they asked for deferral a few hours before the council meeting starts. So I said no, because my recommendation is that we continue to move this, we move, we move approval on the personnel policies, and then I very openly said, I am happy to sit down with you. They want to bring their business agent in for the discussion. I'm happy to sit down with her as well. And again, I would extend that same offer to the police or fire, or to non-union employees, and have a discussion.
I just believe this is-
To that point, though, Jeff.
I'm sorry, yes, Rockne, let me just finish what my point. I said that because it doesn't make sense to us. We asked this to be deferred for a reason, and that reason is not being fulfilled, and this has come back to us again, you know? And even though they asked you today, and you said no, I guess before you, you said that, you should have think about why the council deferred it. We deferred it so they can, we have input from them. And since we don't have the input from them, we should still defer it. I'm not saying that, like, nothing against you, but this is, that's what we asked last time, and I think we need the input from the union.
Okay, let's hear from other council people.
Well, I think to that point, Jeff, you had indicated that you would be willing to discuss and negotiate this with the individual. I think you had said that, that you would be willing to do that.
I, you know, that, that's where you, this is personnel policies that you adopt, and you adopt them for a reason. They're not administrative. We recommend them to you, but I think you need to understand that there's a clear distinction between personnel policies and collective bargaining agreements. Those are two very different things. I have never heard or been a part of any organization that negotiates personnel policies. That's just a highly unusual, to collect feedback and to take that feedback into account, both for me as city manager and for you to counsel, that's routine, that's common. But, but to sit down and negotiate for a document that covers multiple unions-
So at least my position is, is that I would like at least the feedback from the various stakeholders before council adopts. So my position is, is that I would request that there be a stay pending further discussion with the affected stakeholders.
All right, if, if that's the case, then both parties need to commit to meeting sometime before our next meeting, so that we can vote next meeting, and not come back and have somebody say we need to defer again. Okay? So if, if that's the understanding, then I personally would be willing to defer to the December 17th meeting. If both parties will not commit to just doing that, I want to vote tonight.
Which, I think, along with that, I think a word has been used erroneously, because I, my intention is not negotiations with the union, obviously not, because that would be the collective bargaining. It's a sitting down and discussing. They need to be aware of what's in the personnel policy manual and why there were changes, what the changes are. And I, as, as we do, I don't, we don't blindly vote on things, approving things, and that's kind of what I think we're being asked here, because we didn't see all of, all of the changes. That's, that's all that I'm asking.
Three.
Do the other council members have a view about this?
Well, I would like to see it resolved by our next meeting.
Right.
But that's my one request.
Well, I would agree it needs to be resolved by the next meeting. I'm, I'm disappointed that if Jeff reached out to the union the day after our last meeting, which was two weeks ago today, that they weren't able to sit down. And again, it is not a negotiation. I've negotiated union contracts as well, from the union side, not the management side, many times. And, and again, this, this is not a union contract. We have three unions, we have a lot of non-unionized personnel, and so if the only concerns are being heard from AFSMI, I am comfortable going ahead and voting on this. And as Jeff said, we can always come back if there are, you know, items that, after input from them or any other employees, we decide, I mean, we've had now, we've had it in front of us for three weeks. So if as councilors, we haven't read it and aren't comfortable with it, then, and don't have specific questions about it, then I would say as councilors, we haven't done our job in reading through it and asking the questions of what we aren't comfortable with. So I'm prepared to vote on it tonight.
Bruce?
Yeah, so one of the things that stick out for me is that this typically isn't something that AFSMI has been involved with, from my understanding. And so my number one question is, what is it right now that maybe sends up a red flag for them to say, hey, this is an item that I want to research, read a little more into because I have concerns? If it is just, there's a new policy, and I have concern because I haven't read it, that is a different conversation. Pauline, you did make mention of, you know, changing the word from can to may, and of course, the difference is huge. And so if there is something that is, you know, needing to be explained, I think Jeff just offered, he can explain the can to may. Otherwise, if there is nothing right now in this moment that is identified as a concern, then I believe that we do vote, and then if there is something that, at any point, if there's a policy that comes with concern, staff is willing, as well as any counselor is willing. I did read through the policy. Nothing really stood out to me as being concerning. But again, you know, my, my lens may not have been AFSMI lens, and I do know that they may look at things from a different angle. So from, for me, if there is no one right now stating that this, this is my concern, if it's can or may, I just heard that, we ask Jeff, why did that happen? Otherwise, I do believe that we, we should be prepared, prepared to vote on it, based on what is in the packet.
So do we need to do a vote on the motion to defer?
There is no motion.
Yes.
There is no motion.
There is no motion yet.
To make the motion.
Okay, so I've moved to-
There's a motion to approve, and, but-
Would we need to deny it?
If we wanted to defer, how would we proceed? Would we vote on the motion to approve and vote that down, or what?
The motion to defer takes priority, so if there's a motion to defer and it's seconded, then you're going to vote on that.
Okay, I would like to invite a motion to defer to December 17th, knowing that the interested parties will have read the document, will have shared their thoughts, and that we will vote on the 17th, up or down.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Salee.
Yep.
Okay, discussion?
We discuss it.
Hearing none. Roll call? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five, two, if we're counting. This has been passed out, but we haven't had a motion to accept correspondence. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence for the, for this particular document, which has to do with whatever that item was in the consent calendar?
Move.
Second.
Hate speech brochure.
Thank you. Yeah, John, did you make the motion? Moved by Thomas, seconded by Salee.
Salee.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item eight, community comment. This is a moment when anybody who would like to discuss, address any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda should feel free to come up and speak to us about it. We have several public hearings tonight. I would like to ask you to keep your comments to not more than three minutes per person so that we can work our way through the public hearings. Good evening, young-
Good evening, young mayor, soon to retire. Thank you for all your good work. You know, it's Human Rights Day, pronouncement today, and I would like to just, just put a fine point on that. We don't have human rights and human dignity and social dignity and rights if we don't have economic dignity and rights. And we have great inequality right now, and a lot of hate speech comes at times when people, when there is a lot of inequality. Somebody mentioned Nazism in the 40s and 30s, and half my mother's family were exterminated. Somebody mentioned Nazism in the 40s and 30s, and half my mother's family were exterminated. And it was during a depressed time in Germany, and inequality was extremely high. The people were easily moved. So I, I would say that right now, in our, our country is the most unequal than it has been since the Great Depression. Many economists say that we are in a recession still for those who are below the, the lower two-thirds. So my suggestion to the council is, please, of all those seven items up there, I think that one should be inequality, and that the council today, and in the future for 2020, should figure out how better to deal with this. You know, it's an interesting point that 90% of the wealth in this country is owned by 10%. How is it that, say, for instance, presidential elections are so tight? Why aren't they runaway? How come, you know? It should be about the people who are working classes, the same in the town and the city as with the country. And I think we should go for it. We're all in this together, right? We're all in this together. None of us own shopping malls and department centers and hotels and whatnot. We're all trying to do this. So we have to work in 2020 for, to erase as much inequality and put that on the priority list, as well as global stewardship. And if we can keep those two things in mind, I think that we'll have a good year. Thank you so much to the counselors who are retiring, and welcome back, welcome in to the new counselors who, who came through the elections this time around. Thank you, every one of you.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move to item nine, planning and zoning matters. Nine A, rezoning South Gilbert Street and Highland Avenue. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.15 acres of land located at the northeast corner of South Gilbert Street and Highland Avenue, from intensive commercial CI-1 zone to riverfront crossing South Gilbert RFC hyphen SG zone. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening, Mayor Danielle Sussman, Neighborhood and Development Services. She, her, hers. This is a rezoning of property, as you've mentioned, at South Gilbert Street and Highland. Currently zoned CI-1, requesting a rezoning to a riverfront crossing zoning district, South Gilbert Street sub-district, highlighted here in the boundary shown in white. It's background, a little bit of background about the information. It's currently the Come and Go site, gas station on the corner, owned by one property owner interested in purchasing the property to the east to combine it all into one lot for redevelopment, again, for quick vehicle service, servicing Come and Go gas station. The proposed redevelopment will expand, expand the floor area of the convenience store and add some additional gas pumps. They did go through the Good Neighbor Meeting Policy and held a Good Neighbor Meeting on October 23rd. Some of the neighboring property owners did attend that meeting and had comments and concerns about how construction would proceed and what disruption they might experience. Generally, the applicant's position is that they'll be able to accommodate all redevelopment on their site without impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. Currently, the subject property does contain, as I said, a gas station built in the early 90s and some commercial condos built in the mid-50s. It has several points of access to both South Gilbert Street, this third, East Third Street to the north, and Highland Avenue to the south, which is non-conforming. Our current access management plan would limit the number of access points to fewer than that. So that is something that we'll discuss when we talk briefly about traffic in this site and redevelopment. The applicant did share a preliminary concept for the site. This is very preliminary. The site would be subject to riverfront crossings form-based code, and so this site would have to be evaluated with those standards. Generally, the form-based code encourages development to the corner with parking either behind or to the side of buildings. We will continue to work with the applicant as they refine that concept. This is the regulating plan contained in the form-based code showing the property highlighted in red in the South Gilbert sub-district, disintended for high-intensity mixed-use development, and encouraging uses similar to what we've seen elsewhere in that district as it redevelopment, as it redevelops. As I said, it does require businesses to be oriented towards the, the street with parking concealed behind the building. As staff goes through a rezoning request, we review several criteria, including comprehensive plan, conformance, and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. In this case, on the right-hand side of the slide is the mock-up that was part of the master, I'm sorry, the district plan for the riverfront crossings, as well as showing a building oriented towards, towards the corner. As I said, this would go through form-based code review and would ensure compliance with the, with the district plan in that way. There are also some access management issues, traffic and circulation, and then the character of the neighborhood is, is largely retail, so this does fit in with that, with that neighborhood. Talking a little bit about traffic, as I said, positioned at a corner with multiple access points surrounding the, the building, rather large, high traffic count due to the proximity to the highway to the south. South Gilbert Street does create some issues with congestion because of the proximity to intersections. Also, the street to the south of the site is one of the few crossings for the Crandic Railroad. As you probably know, traffic volumes and turing movements at traffic lights and poor access management lead to an unsafe condition for pedestrians and vehicles, creating decision points that would not necessarily need to be there. As I said, the pedestrian environment is also very important. That's one of the aspects of the form-based code. As we've rezoned properties throughout the South Gilbert Street corridor, the city has ensured that additional right-of-way be secured, so that future improvements to South Gilbert Street can incorporate improvements for pedestrians in this corridor, so that is a condition that staff has included in this application. So as far as next steps, we're at the stage highlighted in blue here, the rezoning from the conventional zoning district to the riverfront crossing zoning district. The next step for this site will actually include an appearance before the Board of Adjustment for a special exception for quick vehicle servicing, that is a requirement for this particular use in this district, and then, of course, review for form-based code compliance and site plan. Based on the review of the relevant criteria, staff does recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with two conditions. First, dealing with closing access points through the streets to limit access to the site to one only, and that that be oriented on Highland Avenue to the south. A second condition is that the applicant must dedicate that additional right-of-way along South Gilbert Street to allow for future pedestrian improvements. At its meeting in November, the Planning and Zoning Commission also voted to support that recommendation, with the conditions as noted by staff. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'm not surprised that this is before council, as far as just redoing the gas station, acquiring the properties adjacent to it. From what I see, I, I really don't have any concerns, I guess. I, I do appreciate the conditions by staff and also by the commissioners with not allowing access from Gilbert Street and only one access from Highland Avenue. That is a hard, I don't know how people are going to cross or, or get out. That is a hard corner for the business as far as in and out traffic. So has there been thoughts about the traffic flow, just with the one entrance?
They're only really in the preliminary concept stages, so, you know, they have a larger site once they combine these two parcels together, so they have area to work with. They agreed to the conditional zoning agreement, so.
Okay. And then the quick vehicle service, what was that about that's going to?
Right. That particular use, or gas station, is considered a quick vehicle servicing and does need to get a special exception, which is an approval process through the Board of Adjustment. It's a process where they have to meet some general criteria and some specific ones for gas stations before they could operate that particular use on the site.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Are there other questions for Danielle?
This may be sort of a comment slash question, but correct me if I'm wrong. Currently, we do not have any regulatory mechanism to require electric charging stations at these sorts of gas stations, so that would be something that would have to change into the future.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
The greenery that's shown in a couple of the photos, I mean, that's not, obviously is not required in the conditional zoning. Is that, that's something that the company is willing to do?
All of the landscaping requirements would be part of the site plan review and some of the form-based code review. So we have standards in our code that would require landscaping of a certain size and height and number, so that would be reviewed at that point. I would take that concept as purely preliminary at this point.
I'd like to follow up on Rockne's question about recharging stations. Would you give the same answer to bike racks?
Bicycle parking is required by our, our code for certain uses. I don't know that this particular use has a requirement. It's typically for residential uses at a specific ratio, much like parking requirements are, but I can, we could check that. That is something that we do regulate more than electric vehicles.
It would seem to me that we need to update our zoning code with regard to electric recharging stations and bike racks, if we're serious about our climate action efforts. So I would recommend that staff put that on a list of actions to be pursuing. I'd also like to seek a clarification. I understand from reading the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting that there will be an entrance to the building from the Gilbert Street side.
The building would.
Is that correct?
The building would be required to front the streets.
I understand, but I mean, in the minutes of the meeting, it, I think a spokesperson for Come and Go said that there would be an entrance to the building.
That would be a standard of the form-based code that would be enforced with that review.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
That was, according to them, a different design than, say, the one that we saw in Muscatine and First and the one on Riverside Drive, because that just has the long wall with, with the glass, but there would be an entrance then.
I believe those also have entrances on those sites as well. They're just not into the front of their operation.
One, one comment I would make on the, the site plan review would be that, and there were some comments by P&amp;Z on the use of pervious paving.
Right.
And, which would relate to the, the storm drainage. It's a lot of paved area. So one, one, I don't know, you know, there was some discussion in our, in our climate action acceleration of revising our site plans with respect to landscape, tree plantings. I don't know if the timing on that is going to work in our favor in this case, but.
It would likely not coincide with this application.
Yeah, but I, I think even just placing the trees closer to the pavement, you know, the, I know the illustrative is, the illustrative and can change, but placing the trees as close as possible to the pavement would have a stormwater and urban heat island effect benefit, because the, the canopy will retain stormwater in its canopy. So if we can get the, the trees closer to the pavement, that would be useful.
I'm struck by how much of the property is dedicated to parking. I think I noticed in the Planning and Zoning Commission's minutes that they discussed that some. It's not clear to me why so much parking, why the company thinks that so much parking is appropriate. What is the, what does the standard require? Do you happen to remember?
I do not have that with me tonight. I'm sure it's based on either square footage of the building, or a number of pumps, or queuing for pumps, or a combination of those. I can find that out for next time.
I mean, I think that would be instructive. I, I suppose in, in the end, it's up to the Come and Go what to do, but it, it's, it's like three times, maybe four times as much of the property is dedicated to parking and moving vehicles than to the facility itself. It's pretty striking. Okay, any other questions for Danielle? Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Hi there.
Good evening. Keith Wagon with C.
Good to see you, Keith.
Thank you. 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive, Grimes. Also with.
Can you write your name down if you haven't already done?
I will. Also with me tonight is Brittany Andreessen with Come and Go. I just wanted to add a few things to some of the comments that we had heard and some notes we had written down. In regards to bike parking, it is a standard for Come and Go to provide bike parking facilities.
Very good.
So I would anticipate at least room for a couple of bikes, if not more. We've been exploring other options for bike fix-it stations, where there's higher bicycle activity in the area as well.
Well, it matters to us, you know, because we do have an aggressive bike master plan.
Absolutely.
We do have an aggressive climate action plan. It matters to us.
Absolutely, absolutely. In comparison to the Muscatine store, the, this store would be very similar in size and shape to that. So generally, the same square footage, hallway on the backside, street front access toward three of the, of the four sides of the site, with pedestrian connections and entrances onto Gilbert as well. In regards to parking and pavement, we certainly understand and appreciate your concerns regarding the amount of pavement. Traditionally, a site this size, our typical model would be in the 25 to 30 parking space range, so we've tried to bring that down a little less than what we typically would see, but there's a certain number of spaces that make the model work. There's a certain number of associate parking spaces. So that's really kind of what we're trying to juggle, is how can we minimize that but still make this model work at the same time? In regards to the large expanses of pavement, it really comes down to circulation of the site, and especially, you know, we, we talked earlier about eliminating one of the accesses off of Highland, so we've got to start thinking about how do we get delivery trucks, how do we get fuel trucks in and out of the site? And do it in a safe manner, so that it doesn't conflict with customers or associates that are working there as well. So some of those larger expanses of pavement are simply to do with that as well. So we have no objection to staff comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Keith. Do anybody have any questions for Keith?
So with the parking and all the pavement, and I understand that you may mention that you'll have bike parking, which is great, but we also, as, as the mayor just stated, have this aggressive climate action and also bike, bike plan within our community. And on Highway One, which is right adjacent, an adjacent street, we're going to be having a bike lane over there, and it's going to be pretty busy right around that corner.
Sure.
So will you prepare, and you don't have to answer this, I guess I'll make a statement. It would be awesome and amazing if, you know, some of this bike parking, there could be preparation made for electric charging stations, where the, I don't understand all of what would make it possible, except something electric to, you know, plug in there. If you all would consider that, as well as if you would consider a bike fix-it station or making sure that the preparation, whatever that means, is in place, because we would love for you all to help in our climate action, which is your climate action, because you're a part of the community. So that's all, I'll just say that it seemed like there's, now would be a great opportunity to put that on the table and come back to council and say, hey, we're doing it.
Absolutely, for sure. I think it's absolutely something that Come and Go would consider. On stores recently, we have seen that become more common, especially bike fix-it stations. I can think of three stores off the top of my head recently that have been, have accommodated electric charging stations for various vehicle types. I think there's some conversations back and forth with manufacturers and suppliers regarding that, so I don't know all the details about it, but I'm sure Come and Go would consider that.
Excellent.
That was my question.
Any other questions for Keith?
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Would anybody, anybody else like to address this topic? Brandon?
Briefly, if, what is 0% carbon mandatory, at least with goal, be not, would, would that be unreasonable to expect of all businesses, not just the, the present one, but with all the concrete and everything involved, you know, that's, that's a large carb, carbon consideration? Does the city tax in a way that can actually put some funds into carbon reduction when, for instance, a business like this uses up those particular resources and creates a carbon footprint? So, you know, my first thought was, well, what can, what can they do? I mean, can they, you know, you're going to tell them to fill half of their parking lot with trees? That would be cool, but apparently that's not going to work in that business model. But is there a way of the businesses to be responsible in taxation and for the city to make use of that to do good things?
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else? Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I need to ask my fellow council members if they are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve the rezoning. Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Suley. Discussion.
I really like this project, and I particularly like the amount of green that you were able to fit in, which I was very impressed with. I love the concept of being amenable to the bike infrastructure. I mean, it's close to Big Grove. I think it's really going to become a bike center, and so I think you are actually going to see the economics of that work for you. And I also want to compliment you. I was a little hard on Come and Go for Muscatine and First, but having seen that building play out in terms of the amount of glass and the design, very confident we'll get a very beautiful structure there that, you know, traditionally we think convenience store. I think we do need to reconceive what we're thinking of with that. And I think this is going to be a real amenity for the district, really enhance the visual appeal. So I really appreciate what you guys have done with that. And because of that, I'm really in support of this particular project.
Anyone else?
I also like the project. I think particularly the aspect of reducing the access points. I mean, it's unbelievable that that one little place now has four different access points. That's just unfathomable. So it will be nice to have the lower number of those. I love the, the trees. I hope you follow through with that, with the, with the photos. I, I hope you listen to the impervious pavement for your parking. That's really great. And it's not that it's an eyesore now, but with all the improvements that are going along on Gilbert, it, it will be a nice improvement.
I think for me, I just like it, especially everything that you guys said about the trees and everything. But I hope you consider the charging, electric charging stations, hopefully.
Yeah, it's a, it's a gateway project in a way in the corner there. So it, it is an important piece of that part of Iowa City. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the improvements. I think it's moving in the right direction.
It'll be the first major one on the east side of South Gilbert to get improved since we started riverfront crossings, so.
We want to see it. Yeah, so I agree with what people have been saying, and I'd reemphasize the electric vehicle recharging station. I think it's very clear that there's a strong impulse to transform the motor vehicle world to electricity rather than gasoline, and that's going to happen incrementally. But 10 years from now, things are likely to be very different than they are now. You know that better than I do, so I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of this. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Suley?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes?
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thanks. Item 9B, rezoning Lehman Avenue and Soccer Park Road. This is an ordinance rezoning approximately 42.01 acres of land located south of Lehman Avenue and east of Soccer Park Road from interim development multifamily, IDRM, and rural residential, RR1, to low-density multifamily, RM12. But the applicant has requested indefinite deferral. Could I have a motion to defer indefinitely?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Suley, second by Thomas. Discussion.
I guess this is a good idea to support the deferring, since we already have the form-based code that's going to be happening in this area, and we will wait and see what's going to come out of that. And after that, maybe the developer can reach out to us again. Thanks.
I agree. I think it would be wise of a developer to see what comes out of that form-based code and regulating plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Voice vote.
Voice vote.
Oh, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence from Michael Pugh, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Suley, second by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9C, zoning code amendment related to utility-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning related to utility-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems. I'll open the public hearing. Evening, Danielle.
Evening. Thanks again. So this is a zoning code text change to advance an effort by the city to make an investment in renewable energy when possible as part of our climate action plan. The city has the opportunity to partner with, or is exploring opportunities to partner with Mid-American Energy for a solar facility on city-owned property near our water treatment plant north of I-80 and west of Dubuque Street. Our zoning code does not currently include regulations specifically for solar. We address solar in a couple other ways in our code that are less clear than we would like it to be for this particular opportunity. So this code amendment is, is written to address, while not a holistic solar approach, the opportunity to be nimble and respond to an opportunity that's before us at the moment. So because our zoning code does not include regulations for solar of this scale, we would otherwise categorize it as large, as a basic utility use. Basic utility uses are allowed in industrial and commercial zones, but not in a public zone, which is what the land is that the city owns by the water treatment plant. Public zones are zones, two, two particular zoning districts, both P-1 and P-2, they include properties that are for schools, parks, police and fire stations, and other civic buildings owned or otherwise controlled by the county, the city, or the school district, or institutional property owned by state or federal government, such as university campuses, regional medical facilities, post offices, and other such places. So this would be, if, the areas shown here would be where utility-scale solar would currently be allowed under our current code, classified as a basic utility. So you can see those areas highlighted in green and blue. Two different processes for approval based on the zoning districts, but allowed in one way or another. The proposed code would create a new definition for utility-scale solar, essentially defining it and then adding it to the public zone district in a way that would allow it to be more easily accessible for that type of property. It would include some additional approval criteria, which I'll walk through. So as far as definitions go, the proposed definition of a utility-scale solar installation would be that it was ground-mounted, so a solar energy system that is structurally mounted on the ground, not a roof, with a fairly large system footprint of at least an acre, so imagining solar collectors covering an acre or more. And be utility-scale, either for the production of energy onsite potentially, or entirely offsite, or a combination of the two. Something that large in area would potentially generate more energy than could be consumed onsite. So like I showed you a moment ago, this is that map of where solar of that, of this scale would currently be allowed, but the proposed changes, the area in blue is where a large-scale, utility-scale solar installation could be allowed. So just to toggle back and forth there a little bit, you can see that this would open up additional areas of opportunity for large-scale solar. As I mentioned, there are several different methods for approval, whether something's allowed by right or what we would call provisionally, whether something has to go through an additional approval process by special exception with the Board of Adjustment, or whether it's simply just not allowed, like I said, in our public zones, P-1 and P-2. So on this slide, you can see the comparison of how basic utilities would be regulated currently and how this proposed code change would allow for provisional, special exception, and new provisional standards in, in the public zone district. Let me go back a slide here, actually. So talking about the difference between provisional, provisional means it's allowed by right, but it does need to meet certain additional requirements or provisions. The special exception is something that needs review and approval by a separate board, the Board of Adjustment, and often those uses need to meet general and additional criteria and approval by the board, and then simply not allowed is fairly obvious. So the staff has reviewed criteria and proposed ways to integrate this utility-scale ground-mounted solar with some provisions that we think would address most of the concerns that would accompany a typical installation, as was currently being considered. Some of these criteria are carried over from how we currently regulate basic utilities. That includes the 200-foot separation distance from residential zones. And then others of these criteria are based on staff research into other cities that have implemented codes similar to this and the Advice of the American Planning Association when it comes to solar, utility-scale solar, excuse me. So the provisions that would apply, like I said, have to do with separations, screening them from public view. There is an exemption for that screening when it's used in part for educational purposes. We see the opportunity here to champion a pilot project, which would raise awareness. So clearly, we wouldn't want, want to make that inaccessible to the public. Does need to have some requirements, though, to keep it secure from the public and to secure the equipment. So there's some fencing that would be allowed and some height restrictions on fencing, also basic heights of the equipment. And then also regulations having to do with if there is lighting on the site at night to avoid light pollution from that lighting, and also to ensure that the surfaces where the solar energy is being collected do not produce a harmful glare during the daytime. Obviously, the benefits of something like this help us further our climate action, climate action goals. We also think that while this isn't a holistic solar ordinance, it does give us the opportunity to be, like I said, nimble, respond to an opportunity before us. Also, it opens up the possibility for others who own land in the public category to perhaps pursue similar projects to, as, as this one, and further that renewable energy generation in the city. Also, because we are the landowner, we will be going through a process of a lease agreement or purchase agreement of some sort. So things that the ordinance might not cover could still be negotiated as part of that process individually as the property owner, making a transaction with, with the energy company. So this is a zoning code text change. It came to you from the Planning Commission, and it is going through three readings tonight for, for you. Once it would be adopted, staff just begins enforcement of the new code. And at their November 7th meeting, by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning Commission did recommend this to you. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to start, Danielle, by saying how impressed I am by how quickly staff can produce nifty maps. I just asked Jeff earlier today if staff could produce and provide such maps for us tonight, showing the locations of these areas that would potentially be affected, and voila, here, here they are. So thank you, Jeff, and thanks to staff for preparing the maps. Just wanted to get that out there first. So do any of you folks have questions for Danielle?
Just one maybe quick question relating to Mid-American's role in this. My recollection of the water treatment plant is that currently there's another energy utility that, was that, is that another one, Jeff?
This is the wastewater.
You're thinking of the wastewater. The wastewater, okay. Question answered.
Good job.
But this does lead the way toward potentially at least development of a utility-scale photovoltaic project on that property.
On the lease.
So, I mean, we're aware of that, and-
Correct. And that would, if we're able to reach agreement with Mid-American, that will come back to you in the form of a lease agreement. So you're really just paving the way through the text amendments. You will get a chance to review a detailed lease agreement if we're able to negotiate that.
It seems like a win-win situation, because for Mid-American also, they're going to be able to achieve their goals of, of their energy production via this, solar, and their wind.
Well, not production, but also visibility.
Visibility.
That's a huge thing, I believe, for them. Okay. Any other questions for Danielle? Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one, I need to ask my fellow council members if you're inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve this zoning code amendment.
Yes.
And I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. So I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Suley. Discussion.
Like I said, I'll just start off. I think it's really fun to see this sort of, these technical amendments, is the actual implementation of when we talk about sort of these broad-brush, you know, goals that we have. Because I think any time we set these really high, high standards, the question is, how are you going to do it? How are you going to get there? And is it feasible? Is this going to achieve everything we want to achieve? No, it's not. But I think this is really, I think the maps, I'm glad, Mayor, that you asked for that. That's really what we're looking at. And there was, and most of these will still be provisional, so they'll still go through a process in order to be able to get it. But to get that visible solar infrastructure that we can get throughout the community to meet our goals and to remove some of those restrictions that we currently have, it's just fun to see that come to fruition. And again, we give kudos to the staff for taking these sort of abstractions and making them into reality. So great work, and I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, and I think also, you mentioned the maps, and if I'm understanding this right, and we're looking at installations that are at least an acre in size and on public property, people should not look at that map and think that we're going to have these all over in all those blue areas, because, one, you've got to have at least an acre, and, two, then you've got to have the separation from residential, et cetera, et cetera. So even within all those blue areas on the maps, there's probably a limited number of sites that this is actually feasible.
It's not just public property, right? I mean, it's property zoned in various ways.
Yeah, it's the, the blue property that she saw, it would be the public property. So think of our parks, our facilities, school district, grounds. That's what you were seeing. That's the big span some blue that came up.
Any other discussion? All right. Good deal. Roll call, please.
Suley?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Suley?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 9E, zoning code amendment related to single-family site development standards. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code of the Iowa City Code related to the riverfront crossings' affordable housing requirements. It's second consideration, but staff has requested expedited action. Could I have a motion to waive consider, second consideration, please?
I move this rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, the second consideration and vote be waived, and the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Thomas. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Suley?
Yes.
Motion, oh, sorry. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 9E, zoning code amendment related to single-family site development standards. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning of the Iowa City Code related to single-family site development standards. It's second consideration. Could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, second by Cole. Discussion.
MEMS.
Oh, sorry, MEMS.
All three of us got in there.
Yeah. Discussion.
Anyone?
No.
Anyone?
Yeah. Okay, I'm not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Suley?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10, rental permit radon testing. This is an ordinance amending Title 17 entitled Building and Housing, Chapter 5, entitled Housing Code, to require radon testing and mitigation in single-family and duplex rental units. This is second, second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS and seconded by Suley. Discussion. Would anybody like to address this topic? I should ask that. Seeing no one. Council discussion?
Nothing. I'm just really happy about learning about radon, that the city is adopting this, like really, we're moving forward, yeah.
Me too.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Suley?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10, rental permit radon testing. This is an This is an ordinance repealing Ordinance Number 194793, a temporary moratorium on new rental permits for single-family and duplex units. And this is first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Move by MEMS, seconded by Teague. Discussion. I guess I would like to say something first here. We've received several communications from residents of older neighborhoods located within walking distance of the university, and they've expressed considerable concern about what will happen after the moratorium expires. I, too, worry that, I'm a neighbor, I live in the Northside neighborhood anyhow, I worry that all the good work we have done with regard to renovating and expanding older neighborhood schools, renovating older houses through the University City Program, and greatly improving several neighborhood parks, will be undermined as a result of the state's two preemptions of local power pertaining to this kind of situation. I'm also very skeptical that the steps we took earlier this evening about parking and radon, coupled with the stricter exterior maintenance and enforcement measures we adopted roughly two years ago, are good, important, valuable, but might not be sufficient to maintain the characteristics and diversity of the city's older neighborhoods. So, I worry about that a lot, just as many other neighbors do. I'm very conscious that it's possible that all the new housing that we have supported or approved with regard to multifamily units and mixed-use buildings is likely to divert some of the market pressure away from those close-in neighborhoods. We certainly hope that was the case when, I don't know, five years ago, we approved the RISE development with its 550 beds or whatever the total is. And I can tell you that several months ago, Jeff and I met, and some staff members, Tracy Hightus, Shirley, and Stan Laberman probably, met with realtors and owners of rental, or managers of rental property. And I heard one manager, owner of a company that manages rental property, who expressly worried that all the new housing, all the new buildings we had been approving and were likely, could possibly be approving over the coming months, would in fact undermine market demand for rental housing in these close-in neighborhoods. So, I'm conscious that that is a phenomenon that is out there and could affect the rental market in that area, and therefore affect what could possibly happen in those close-in neighborhoods. Likewise, I'm very conscious that undergraduate enrollments at the University of Iowa might decline somewhat over the next few years. It's kind of hard to tell. That also would reduce demand and market pressure in those older neighborhoods. So, there's conflicting things going on here simultaneously, and it's kind of hard to process. But it is not clear to me that we, no, I should say, it is not clear to me that we can invent, over the next couple months, a solution that the staff has not been able to identify or devise over the past seven months. So, it's like, how are we going to do that? But, and for that reason, I don't feel comfortable simply voting no on ending the moratorium, as many neighbors have urged us to do. But I also don't think we need to end the moratorium sooner than scheduled without first assuring ourselves, and therefore assuring the interested public, that we have adequately explored the possibilities. And so, with that in mind, my inclination is to say, I think we should defer action on the proposed ordinance to our December 17th meeting, and that in the interim, I think we should invite other specific council members and any other interested members of the public to suggest in writing one or more additional possibilities for us to consider. We need to at least open that possibility, give people a chance to do that, but we don't want to just kind of stretch this out without some confidence that we know what we're doing and we have an end goal in mind. So, that's my suggestion. I know we have a motion on the floor, but I understand that a motion to defer would trump that, so, ah, it's amazing how that verb has gotten mangled.
So, you're making that formal motion, Jeff?
So, no, I'm inviting someone else to move that we defer action on this ordinance to December the 17th, and that we invite other council members or members of the interested members of the public to submit in writing before the Thursday preceding our formal meeting, that'd be December the 12th or something like that, a recommended action that could possibly help. And then we would have that to process.
I would like to ask that before we even consider a motion to defer, that we be allowed to have a little more discussion on the merits of the issue itself?
Fair enough, yeah, I think that's completely fair.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Jeff, and/or any other staff members, that he might ask, to kind of fill us in on what kind of options the staff has looked at, how you've come up with those, how you have maybe eliminated certain things. I know in one of the emails, there was, and I, just kind of for the public benefit as well, there was some allusion to ordinance in Cedar Falls, yet question of whether we can do that. So, I think it would just help us and help the public to kind of have an idea of what staff has done. That would certainly help me as well in terms of determining whether I think this is worth defer.
Yeah, sorry, my apologies, because as Jeff knows, I have already asked him to be prepared to discuss those matters, and I meant to say that right at the start.
And at some point, public comment hasn't taken place.
Yeah.
So, I'll speak generally about how we got here, and then talk about some of the things that we've considered, and then between Eleanor and I, we can talk through the Cedar Falls ordinance with you, and answer any questions about that that you may have. So, I won't go through the three- or four-year history here with the state legislature changes, you know that, but in May of 2019, staff did ask you for a 10-month moratorium. You'll remember that was quite a controversial time. I think people, a lot of people felt that 10 months was too long, and there was actually a motion and a split vote on council on how long that moratorium should be, with those in the minority asking for a six-month moratorium. And that's right where we're about. We're a little over that six-month period right now. What we communicated to you and to the public as staff is that we felt that 10 months was necessary to fully vet this out, but that we're going to do everything we can to resolve this issue as soon as possible. So, that is why you're seeing this item come before you, before the sunset date, is because we've done that work. Prior to tonight, you held that first vote on those two ordinances, and to us, it made sense, because we are not actively working on any other regulations related to this, that we retire or we end the moratorium, coinciding with the third reading of the two items that were on your agenda that you already voted on. So, since May, we had a few meetings with realtors and landlords. I, along with staff, also met with the neighborhood council for a general discussion about observations in the neighborhoods throughout Iowa City, not just the ones that you've heard from in recent days. We reviewed and discussed possibilities, strategies of other communities, and that review doesn't, it didn't take a whole lot of time, because as I've communicated to you before, familial status is used by the vast majority of communities, university communities in particular throughout the country, followed by rental caps. After that, there's not a whole lot of examples that we can turn to. So, we really struggled to find other communities that had strategies that we might be able to mimic. We did take a look also at the changes that we made after the familial status changes were made at the state level, and it was much more than the rental caps. I think we all kind of focused in on those rental caps, and the mayor mentioned property maintenance standards, but we did a lot in addition to that, a lot of code changes. So, I can run through a few of those with you, and I think you'll get a sense of what we were trying to do at that time. We said that no more than 35% of a finished floor area could be a bedroom. We had a minimum bedroom size of 100 square feet. And then we also required that 100 square feet of shared living space shall be provided for every bedroom. So, what do you see when you take those collectively? We're looking at the use of those homes and making sure that it's just not a bunch of bedrooms in these homes, that density was being controlled through how homes were built, and that if you were going to have three or four bedrooms, that there was going to be adequate common space for the people living in that unit. We enacted paving limitations in the rear yard. So, again, trying to protect the character of the neighborhood, making sure that we didn't lose a lot of the greenery, and that we weren't increasing density unnecessarily by putting a bunch of vehicles in the rear yard. We looked at occupancy based on parking, and that's really what I think you're going to hear this comes down to. If you really want to tighten up occupancy beyond what we've suggested, parking is probably the thing that you have to hang your hat on to, but that's how we're governing that occupancy right now. How many off-site parking spaces do you provide? And that determines the level of occupancy for those units. And then we also did minimum open space requirement, so making sure that you have a yard, and that the entire lot wasn't being taken over by either parking or house, you know, physical house space. So, as we went back and we looked at that, we really felt like we need to give those time to see if they're going to be effective. We think they are going to be effective in managing the density for individual properties. And that's why when we went through our analysis this time, we felt like, boy, when we went through this two years ago, we really checked all these boxes. The one that we didn't, and we frankly didn't anticipate, was the front yard paving, which you considered. We did the rear yard paving, we probably should have figured out, and once we prohibit that, they're going to move to the front yard, but we're addressing that now. So, we really feel that we've been able to, through those code changes, change or better protect how those, the neighborhoods and how homes are being used. And we pulled some data at the request of Councilman Thomas, and I think it's pretty telling. If you recall, after the familial status law changed, we kind of had the rush to the well for building permits, and we reported at that time, within a period of a few weeks, we had 40 applications to expand bedrooms. So, in a matter of several weeks after that change, well, since 2017, I'm sorry, yeah, since 2017, so after we made those changes that I just described, in the university impact area where we have a couple thousand rentals, we've only had 13 properties pursue bedroom expansions. Okay, that's a very small number, that's less than 1% of your rentals pursued those bedroom expansions, and 10 out of those 13 were one, just expanding one bedroom. So, we really only had the one kind of major expansion, which you heard about at the last meeting, which is a six-bedroom expansion. We really don't feel like that is going to be, I don't think there's a whole lot of opportunity for that based on our regulations. I can't promise you it'll never happen again, but I think it's going to be a very rare case where someone can add a significant number of bedrooms, given the code changes that we made in, after, at the same time we were doing the rental cap ordinance. So, kind of to sum up what I'm saying is, although we lost the rental caps, we still have a lot of other changes that we made at that same time that we feel really good about, and we are not seeing the data, at least, and we certainly don't have the experience, the anecdotal experience of our inspectors, of saying, we're going to see this massive expansion of people pursuing greater densities within homes. Now, I can't, we can't really intervene with the market forces, okay? The rental caps clearly was a mechanism to intervene with market forces and not allow additional rental permits. We can't do that, and I think we have to accept the fact that the state has told us loud and clear that they don't want us to intervene with the market forces. So, we have to make the best of that situation and make sure that the rentals that are added, again, are done in a way that don't detract from that, from the character of the neighborhood. So, that's where we stand. I'll turn it back over to you, and then when the time's right, we can go through the Cedar Falls ordinance that's been mentioned a few times.
I guess I'd like to hear more about the Cedar Falls. Anything else people want to talk about?
Yeah, why don't we hear about Cedar Falls? And then it could be that there are people in the audience who would like to speak to this, too.
Eleanor's going to start.
I'm going to start with the Cedar Falls ordinance, so I thought it'd be good to just review what the Cedar Falls ordinance does. Essentially, after the state eliminated our ability to regulate occupancy based on familial status, whether you're related or not related, Cedar Falls changed unrelated people to persons 18 years of age and older. So, currently, their ordinance says that at least for new rentals, those that came on after August of 2014, you can have two, you can have as many of, not 18, under 18, but you can have two 18-years and older by right. You can have three to four if you obtain a group rental permit. Actually, you can have more than four if you obtain a group rental permit. And staff does the first review of the group rental permit, and then if the person seeking a greater occupancy is not happy, they can go to their Board of Housing Appeals. In looking at the criteria that they look at in determining whether they're going to grant more occupancy, i.e. a group rental permit, they look at some of the same things that we have put in place in our housing and zoning code. They look at off-street parking requirements. They look at whether the zoning requirements are satisfied. They look at a couple things, like a lot with an area, a lot area that, to me, don't make a lot of sense, but the takeaway, I think, is that they're looking at those on a case-by-case basis. There's some additional criteria in there. But we've looked, at their six-month review of this ordinance, they had some data on their website, and there are significant numbers of the group rental permits for increased occupancy being given. One thing about the Cedar Falls ordinance, unlike the way we do things, is that if a unit had a rental permit on August of 2014, they retained their occupancy at four until it's sold, and then there's some additional requirements. That is not how we apply our regulations. We apply the existing regulations at the time of the issuance of each yearly or bi-annual rental permit. We've been aware of the Cedar Falls ordinance ever since the familial status preemption, and I rejected it as a, because I think it's subject to a lot of challenges. Number one, I think it's pretextual. I think it's basically taking unrelated, and it's calling it 18-years of age and older. Essentially, if you look at the Cedar Falls ordinance, what they did is they took unrelated, and they substituted 18-years of age and older. But I think what also is a real problem, and kind of illustrates the pretextual nature of it, is that there is no exception for persons 18-years of age and older who are family members. So, in other words, let's say four brothers wanted to live in a home, or four cousins wanted to live in the home that were over 18-years of age, or a grandmother and three grandchildren who weren't, you know, they couldn't live in the home. If we were going to draft such an ordinance, I think to be constitutional, because there's a liberty interest that's been recognized, a due process interest in the ability for families to have their particular living arrangements that they choose to have. So, in other words, the United States Supreme Court has said, it's okay for you to regulate So I think that's a major flaw with the Cedar Falls ordinance. And obviously, if you put an exception in for family members, you kind of come full circle to the
Same thing.
Same thing that the state has
How we got to unrelated in the first place.
So I think it's really problematic. I identified those issues from the start, and we never really pursued that approach. But, and I think that another reason to not pursue the Cedar Falls approach is because you can accomplish the same things by doing, by putting your housing code requirements in place and your zoning code requirements, whether those are stringent enough or not stringent enough, that can be debated. But it's things like parking, it's things like open space, those kind of requirements that are going to, that I think we have left to dictate the occupancy without the associated challenges.
Okay, this is very helpful. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Eleanor. Would anybody in the public like to address this topic? Please, come on up, Nancy. We state your name and write it down, too.
My name is Nancy Carlson. I live at 1002 East Jefferson. And I would like to pass. I'm here to ask you to look at the moratorium a little bit longer and a little more closely. First, I would like to read a letter that was signed by some of our neighbors. Dear City Council members, in the 1990s, our area was rezoned from RM12 to RNS12. We had seen the pressure apartment houses put on core neighborhoods. We, living in the neighborhood, never felt safe. When you make a long-term commitment in buying a house, you want to know what you can expect, both in the makeup of the neighborhood as it stands and as it changes. We are asking you, the city council, to help us. Although we realize the structure at 938 East Jefferson will be built, we believe such structures have a destabilizing effect on ours and other neighborhoods where they could be built. Given Iowa City's rental history, we believe this can become the newest concept for developers in the central neighborhoods. We have worked with the city in the past to guide the changes that promote a positive addition while maintaining a vital and diverse neighborhood. Please help us in our commitment. And this was, we went around the neighborhood and there were 12 neighbors who signed it. Attached that is a map. This shows that we are not against development. In fact, in our area, there has been a lot of development. Eight and nine happened in 1971. The rest of this all happened from the 1990s on to this day. You can see there are lots of different ways to do development, including moving houses, moving houses or building on, or building new ones. I would like to go over one other thing. I did some research and did a breakdown of the square footage of the structure at 938 because one of the things that you, one of the things that is said you want to use to regulate the number of people in a house is the number of bedroom space. 938 Jefferson has 3,408 square feet. The total bedroom square footage is 1,044 square feet, which is under the 35%. However, each bedroom has a private bathroom. If you add the private bathroom on to the bedroom, you come up with 1,504 square feet, which is approximately 44% of the square footage of that building. That leaves 1,904 square foot for communal living. Because one of the things we wanted to make this feel is like a house, like a real, you know, like a group of family would live in it. In the communal space, the living room is 197 square feet. The kitchen is 66 square feet. And there's a storage room down in the basement that's 195 square feet. That comes to a total of 456 square feet out of 1,904 square feet that's used for communal living. The other square footage, or approximately 1,446 square feet, is used for hallways, steps, laundry room, furnace room, and one-half bath. So is this the type of, is this the type of construction that we want to see? And are we really attempting to build houses that really would house a family? Or is this a de facto rooming house, which we had gotten rid of a long time ago? And the thing is that with the bedroom percentage, I believe, is very important, or the personal space percentage is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Hi, Austin.
Hello there. Austin Wu, U.S. Student Government City Liaison. I would like to draw some focus regarding student concerns in relations to the rental permit moratorium currently in place. We recognize that the moratorium was enacted due to actions outside of your control by the state government. However, the policy the moratorium intended to replace the rental permit cap was far from ideal as well. Past UISG city liaisons have expressed reservations about the potentially deleterious effects towards students that overregulation of the number of rental units in the city could have, and I would like to reiterate those concerns. A stable supply of rental housing near the university is essential for keeping housing affordable for students in walkable neighborhoods where they can dispense with their cars, which is crucial for safer streets and reducing carbon emissions. Renters or students, workers, and residents, just because they do not have title to land does not mean they should be treated as less welcome or a nuisance to be dealt with. I believe that solutions that are mutually beneficial to homeowners and renters alike are possible. Programming that seeks to create neighborhood engagement among all residents, as well as exploring housing options that cite homeowners and renters on the same or nearby parcels, as opposed to some of the large-scale landlords or properties today, could both be potential past-stable neighborhoods without limiting where renters can live. And then there's something, the late handout that I think was of note as well. Susan Shalhoub drew, I think, what I believe is a correct point, that some of these new large, higher-density student housing, like student marketed developments, kind of like Latitude or Rise, might actually have an unintentional effect of drawing students to houses or to lower-priced properties. A lot of these new developments are kind of like advertisers, like these luxury sites with en suite bathrooms, granite countertops, a lot of things that students don't really want, I think, or can't afford, and it pushes them into these core neighborhoods as well. So I think one option that might actually be worth exploring is bringing back some of these SRO places or true single occupancy places that were really common in the United States before 1945, but kind of have fell by the wayside. But for young people who moved around a lot, they were an important source of affordable housing back then, I think they could be worth exploring again. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Anyone else? Hi, Diana.
Hi there, Diana Harris. I live on the north side. I own a house that I live in, and I was, it was interesting to hear the city manager explain why there is a reason to sunset this moratorium. But I can tell you that the people I know in my neighborhood have not come to council and say, please get rid of this moratorium. I think the amount of time that you have to work on it is probably not sufficient, but there's no reason to cut it off. I would also like to comment on the fact that I have been in this room more times to talk about dear calling than I have to have conversation with anybody about the kinds of things that affect the neighborhood that I live in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anyone else, so we should have council discussion. And what we have is a motion on the floor. I introduce the possibility of deferring action to the 17th. We could engage both of those topics, but at some point, we'll have to vote on either, either on the motion that's on the floor or to introduce a motion to defer and vote on it. Does that make sense?
Uh huh. Does. I guess when I, I want to say that, you know, I guess we as a city, and especially the city council who passed the renter cap, we as a city are very interesting. That's why, I guess, in the beginning, they work hard to pass the renter cap. And after that, the six-month moratorium. And also right now, the city is working, the staff, they said, as I heard from them, they are working very hard to use another measurement to make the situation better. For example, the opening space and the barking. I understand the situation by the residents. I agree with you, and I guess we are in the same page because the city done it before. And that means the staff, I guess, and the council, they have interest, the same interest as you. But right now, the city cannot do anything because of the, what happening at the state level. And I think I will be really, it will be glad, I will be glad to hear something from the public, any kind of measurement that we, as a city council, we can consider or the staff can consider. I was hoping the, as a, you know, a city that can be work, but now we, as Eleanor just laid out, it's just like something we going around the same thing and like some kind of, you know, maybe is this not going to be right by the constitution and all this? I just really don't know what else can we do. But if there is another measurement that the public have it and we don't know about it, you know, I will be glad to hear it and consider it. That will, yes, I will accept deferring it if somebody else will come up with something so we can talk about it. In the same time, if that will make, if the sunset for March will make the resident happy and we can do it, even though I don't know, does it make sense or not? But if that's something that what you want, I think also we can consider it if we can just also, after we're deferring it, if we can continue to march. But for me, it doesn't make sense, but still, I just think we are not going to see it somehow. But that's all we have in our hand right now, and the staff is really working hard to lay another measurement to better the situation. That's what I think, and I'm good for deferring.
Okay. So I do hear what you're saying, Maz, as far as like, if someone was able to come up with another, kind of a tool in the toolbox, and that hasn't already been kind of laid out and put into place, then I think we are definitely open to that. A part of it is, we don't have the right to keep, you know, the enforcement. And so the moratorium, for me, I was the one that suggested six months because I really feel that as lawmakers, we cannot hold on to something. If there's, if we've already exhausted all the tools, we can't keep holding on to something that we don't have authority to hold on to. There is people being affected, whether we agree with that or not. But there's people that want to sell their home, whether they, they have a right to sell it to whom they want. I think Austin just talked about, you know, that we do have to consider how we speak about renters because they are also residents of our community as well that are highly welcomed by me. And I'm not suggesting that anybody has, you know, said anything negative about the student population and that, related to that. And I also do get that some of our residents, communities are, every place you look on the street, it's a rental, rental, rental. And so I do get maybe the concern from the rentals, which, you know, the ordinances have started to try to, you know, combat between the housing and the zoning codes when you're talking about, you know, parking now being, you know, on the, in the middle of the, of the grass and that type of stuff. So there are major things that I think as council and people within the community do want to address to make sure that their neighborhood looks like a neighborhood, the quality of the individuals that are there care about, you know, the properties and that type of stuff. So I do feel, at this moment in time, that the tools and the toolbox we have used, to the best of our knowledge and the best of our ability. I appreciate staff for doing all the hard work with not only the realtors and, but also people within the communities. It is unfortunate that I do hear people saying they weren't aware, or they hadn't, you know, maybe kind of made comment until now that they're realizing that the moratorium is going, is coming off. We just, you know, talked about Cedar Falls, and what I hear is, what Cedar Falls is doing is probably, we're essentially doing it just in different ways. So we are doing everything that we can to make sure ultimately that the communities and neighborhoods are well-taken care of, groomed, and all this other stuff. The other thing is that there is also opportunities, when we're talking about landlords and, because there are some things that I know within our, you drive down the street and you, we don't want to be able to point out that's a rental house. And I think a lot of the pointing out of rental houses, there are some common characteristics in that stereotyping, and that's, some of it is not true because some of it could just be a homeowner that, you know, their property looks like what some might call a rental property. But I think there's a lot of measures that were put in place, and it's really for the character of the neighborhoods. We do know that there's a lot of individuals that will like the moratorium to continue. What I say is, at least for me personally, I think we've exhausted the tools and the toolbox. And for me to hold on to the moratorium until next May, after the state has stated, we don't have the
It'd be March.
Until next March. The state has said, we don't have that authority. I don't believe that, personally, I can continue with that. I do hear the mayor request to, you know, see if there's another item that we can put into place. But just like, you know, the, kind of the, and I'm sorry, the parking, and I'm trying to figure out the terminology, of some of the things that we're doing relating to zoning codes, that can come, that still can come. The moratorium, that's not a tool. So a tool would be, you know, the zoning code. So if there's another tool, like the zoning code, those conversations can happen now. To hold this till the 17th, I don't know that that is going to accomplish. I really think that if there's another tool that wants to be suggested, then let's get that tool, let's get it on the, let's, you know, kind of discuss it and see if it can be on the agenda. So for me, I am, I can hold up the moratorium because I don't see any more tools currently. And if there are more tools, bring them to us because we want to make sure that we do everything within our ability to protect the character of our communities.
Let me make just one quick point, and then I'll let other people speak. But I think it's important that we understand that what we are doing tonight is a first consideration of an ordinance. So we will have second consideration on the 17th. We will have third consideration, assuming we do not condense, which I'm assuming we would not, until our first meeting in June. So until we have passed
January.
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 I'm just, I'm just getting
For May and then June, yeah.
I don't want to have winter. In January. So we have an entire month before this would actually be repealed to give people plenty of opportunity. of opportunity to bring forth more ideas, tools, whatever that we could use. So based on the fact that we have an entire month before this would actually be completed, I do not support deferring it because at any point in time, we can.
Yeah.
Boeing, John Rockne.
Well, I'll, I'll chime in on this. You know, I've really tried to focus on the goals that we established before going into the moratorium. And I think the critical one that I see, well, there are a couple of them, but probably the main concern I have is, is goal two, which states, maintain neighborhood characteristics and housing options suitable for attracting a diverse demographic in the city's older single-family neighborhoods. And I, I do like the way that's being phrased. It, you know, it's, it's a diverse demographic. I, I think it's important that we try to, when we, when we're discussing these issues, try to avoid using language owner occupies, the owner occupants versus the, the renters, it's the students versus the non-students. You know, I think that the notion of diverse demographic tries to avoid that, and I think that's useful. And in fact, you know, what, what we've always, you know, this has been going on for decades, 50 some odd years, trying to establish, in a sense, this notion of diverse demographic in what is, I would argue, one of the most important neighborhoods or group of neighborhoods in Iowa City in that they are part of the core of Iowa City. It's defined, defining image of Iowa City is, is strongly, the neighborhoods, the core neighborhoods strongly contribute to that either in a positive or negative way. They're also extremely valuable. You know, if you, I, I suspect if we looked at the assessed values of the core neighborhoods, we'd find their assessed values are higher than most of our other neighborhoods, partly because they're a mix of single-family and multifamily. They also, I think, are important in terms of being in the core. They have access to employment at centers, the commercial area of the downtown, and it's within a walkable distance. So it's really, I think many people would like to live near where they work, if they should work in the downtown or at the university and have access to the downtown. So it's, it's a valuable, these core neighborhoods are very valuable to us as a city. So I, you know, I would be, I would love to lift the moratorium, right? I mean, of course, you know, we're good, let's move forward. But, you know, we do have the example of 938 Jefferson. And, you know, that's, as Nancy has, has stated, it's a, it's a seven-bedroom, seven-bath house. As a counselor, how can I feel comfortable and secure that we lift the moratorium when, when that is a project that was actually permitted back in April, is moving forward? When it's moving in a diametrically opposed direction from what our goal is stating, which is diversifying the demographic? So I, it would be very difficult for me to say, yeah, let's lift the moratorium when we have evidence on the ground that our goal isn't being achieved. Now, I think it's from what, as what Eleanor said, a, a main focus of the Cedar Rapids or Cedar Falls code is, is controlling occupancy by parking. Maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need to revisit our parking standards to, to make sure, because the way the parking is dealt with at 938 Jefferson is most of the parking is just accessed off the alley and it's a row of parking. What's very troubling to me about 938 is it's a, I, I think there are many properties like it in the core neighborhoods. It's a, it's a large lot with a relatively small house. It's, it's actually ripe for development. You know, the value of the, of the dwelling is not much more than the value of the land. The land's actually pretty valuable and the dwelling not so much. My goal has always been, and it has been for probably five years, is taking the development potential of the core neighborhoods and directing it to both diversifying, as stated in our goal, diversifying the demographic, allowing opportunities for rental, non-rental, for people of all ages and, and incomes. One of my concerns with this is that if we, if we do see these larger residences, because we have no occupancy cap and these larger lots accommodate the off-street parking requirement, that that will preempt the opportunities of accomplishing the missing middle that we all were very thrilled by in the, in the South District. Actually, the missing middle is, is more a strategy that's considered an infill strategy. This is what Minneapolis is proposing. So that, you know, we were in a, in a sense, ahead of Minneapolis. Now we're sort of putting our, our infill missing middle on the back burner. I'm afraid it's going to completely disappear if we do not provide an opportunity for that to happen. So, you know, I do support the deferral. I, I really feel 938 Jefferson is a, is a warning shot that we do not have, we have not revised the site development standards sufficiently to ensure these higher occupancies. From what I understand, Cedar Falls typically sees, you know, and they will allow up to four, but they're not seeing any more than four. So it seems to me we are still allowing occupancies that clearly move us away from this notion of diversi, diversifying the demographic. So I, I really feel we need more time to consider it.
Yeah, I'm going to be supportive of more time. And I think one thing that's very important to clarify, this whole renter versus non-renter has never been what this has been about. As I see it, it's always really been about one specific narrow issue, which is the conversion of single-family and duplex houses that were designed for original use and for a variety of reason, over the course of 50 years, morphed into something else, where you would get a single-family home broken up into little pieces with multiple rooms that resulted in densities that were far in excess of what we ever thought originally they were intended to do. It never applied to multifamily. So this notion that this council is against renters, just nothing could be further from the truth. We have done, we, I, tons of multifamily. We've done tons of low-income family housing, and that is something that has been a core value that we shared. I, I just don't think that in terms of renter versus non-renter, that's just not true. The other part, in terms of what we're looking at, is a balance, a diverse demographic. And that also includes long-term renters. I think of organizations like the Housing Fellowship. One of the things they've been able to do is get housing stability for long-term renters so they can sink roots as well. Students are by definition, short-term. So there are some unique issues to, relating to students. And this notion that we don't love students, we love, who would live in Iowa City if you didn't love students? But there are challenges. When you have nine students go into one building, that makes it virtually impossible for a nonprofit to, to purchase that and use it as like a low-income housing. It makes it very difficult for a family to compete in the marketplace to be able to purchase some of these units. So that, that was the context in which this originally arose. It was never intended to be a anti-renter at all. Most of us have been renters, a lot of us have friends that are renters. It was never our intent. We have had these regulatory tools that have been taken away from us. We completely understand that. We understand that come March 1st, we'll see what will end up happening. We cannot do that. We get that. But are there any additional tools that we can utilize, that we can explore? I think we owe it to ourselves to do that. Obviously, it's going to fall into the province of the next council. It is extremely complicated. And if nothing else, just to convey to the community what we're doing, I think, we're not talking about a indefinite suspension. We're talking about at least a two-week for that first reading. I say, let's give us that time to do it so we can get that additional feedback and, because I, I agree with you, John. I mean, this seven-bedroom, seven, I mean, that is in effect a rooming house. And by the way, I actually have no problem with additional rooming houses in the neighborhood as long as that's what they're designed to be. I think of one of the famous rooming houses right near Papa John. That's a classic rooming house. I'm not against that. So I agree with Austin in that sense that I think if we need to identify renter, you know, if there's any regulatory barriers to some additional rooming houses that are designed as such, with hallways and bathrooms and designed as a rooming house, I don't have a problem with that. But it should be designed as such as opposed to these, in essence, what became Rube Goldberg machines in the sense of a single house that was broken up six different ways. And it's been very difficult for our staff in terms of the health and safety piece of it to ensure that those are safe places to live. So there are additional challenges. It is an extremely complicated issue. So I say, let's give us a little bit more time. I will be supportive, at least deferring this for two weeks. As Susan brings out, I mean, it, so we defer it two weeks, it will take three readings. That gets us close to the deadline anyway. So we're, we're not talking about that much time. And I think everyone in council is agreement that we can't go any farther. So it's really just a matter of degree where we may have some disagreement here, is where I'm coming from.
I also think that perhaps deferring it, as the mayor suggested, does have some merit and is a valid argument on that to request other options because what I see this, the problem with this is that general public wasn't really aware of our intent to repeal this before it came in, in this packet. And I see that kind of as a, as a trust issue too. They trusted when we set the date that that's what we sunsetted as, is in March. And I think that we draw a fine line when we start changing our plans and changing dates for things and changing sunset dates. And I think, but as Rockne just pointed out, we'll be even closer to that March date and perhaps I'll think a little differently and the public will be aware of our intentions then.
One, one question I, I do have is the common space, you know, the housing code, especially after hearing about 938 Jefferson, if that is something that can be looked at in this process?
Those are the sorts of things that...
Because again, I guess for me, I wasn't, what I heard Rockne say was, this really was related to rooming houses, multiple people in one unit. And, and I, I do agree, there is a place for rooming houses, like, so I guess I didn't understand that was a part of this piece so largely, but...
Saying historically, not as much, yeah.
Historically. But I do think that one, but again, that's a tool outside of the moratorium, but, which I'm, I'm fine with delaying it to next, to the 17th. But the, the common space, I would just like to mention, you know, the housing code, just to look at that, to come back and see if there's anything that we can do there. The off-street parking, I do have questions about that because whatever we set is not just related to rent, rental homes. It would be related to homeowners as well. Is that correct? Off-street parking? So I, I think we also have to keep that in mind because there are homes where families live, where, you know, if you have three kids and, you know, two...
Or five, like me.
Yeah, five kids, although we're not promoting cars, you know, totally with climate action, but that is to be considered as well because, you know, that, that's a hardship. So if we're looking at that type of stuff, I think we also have to realize there are homeowners with large families and, because that really gets at the off-street parking, at least the language right now, is getting to strategies to decrease how many people rent in a rental.
Okay, so I'll say a few words about this. Some of you know this, some of you don't. I have lived in the North Side neighborhood for 25 or more years. I've lived there as a renter, I've lived there as a landlord, and I've lived there as a homeowner. Plus, like many of you, I've been working on this, as has the staff, for two-plus years. So this is a, a difficult problem, and it's one that I can say I personally understand because I've lived, I've lived it for almost 25 years in various ways. But the central question facing us tonight is real simple. Shall we end the moratorium with our first vote tonight and the next two that would follow? I'm really doubtful that we or other interested parties can invent a solution that the staff has not already come up with. I'm very skeptical that that is likely to happen. But I think we need to give interested people, whether they're on the council or out in the audience or watching on TV or whatever, we need to give them a couple of weeks to propose a solution they think, think might work. And therefore, I think we do need to defer to the 17th, to defer our first consideration to the 17th, with the expectation that interested people will propose in writing, prior to that date, a solution they think would work. And then we'll have something in front of us, we can consider it, and if we think it has merit, we've got some time to work on it. If we don't, we vote up or down on the moratorium. So that, that's why I was proposing to defer. I, I'd like to say a couple of other things briefly. One has to do with the, the new housing and the claim that construction of lots of new housing units in big buildings is going to drive students into smaller rental units in the North Side or Miller Orchard or Longfellow or any related neighborhood. Makes no sense whatsoever because it's, those units are expanding supply. Some students are going to go into those units, a lot of students actually. So that's going to decrease market pressure, if anything, on those close-end neighborhoods. Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's just a misguided objection. All right, with, I don't want to blather on about this.
Did you put a motion to defer on the floor?
Yeah, could I have a motion to defer to the 17th of December?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Cole, seconded by Saleh. Discussion?
I would just like to make one final comment because I haven't, I don't think I've really commented about the merits of what's been happening, and I do want to address that. I do not, I wish, and I think all of us wish, that the staff could have found stronger, better mechanisms for addressing the issues that we're talking about. I think when we talk about this house at 938 Jefferson, that's very concerning. I've talked for years about that concern of these smaller houses being torn down and behemoths being built in neighborhoods like that where they just don't fit. So I, I am very concerned and sensitive about the, the preservation of these neighborhoods and making them continually available for the terminology that we came up, the...
Diverse demographic.
Yeah, the diverse, diverse demographics. And I, I don't think we're, I don't believe we're where we want to be, but I also believe that our staff is very good at looking at all the options. And because we would have a month until we had completed our votes on this, I think that month gives people plenty of opportunity to bring to us ideas and suggestions. And if we and our staff hear one that we think at that point in time is workable, we can always defer the next vote or vote not to, to stop the moratorium. But as Bruce said earlier, I think we also have an obligation on the other side, and that is to landlords, property owners who might want to get a rental permit. And so to postpone this simply out of the idea that we might get another idea that will help us, I don't think is fair to people on that side. So I will not support the deferment, I, the deferral. I think we should start the voting process tonight, keeping open the idea of getting suggestions and ideas from people over the next four weeks. And if we find something great, we can defer it from that point on. Otherwise, in a month's time, we would end the moratorium, which I think is a fair thing to do for the people, as Bruce said, who might want to be trying to sell their home or for other financial reasons are being impacted by the moratorium.
Further discussion? I'd just like to clarify one point. If we defer action tonight to the December 17th meeting, that does not mean that we are extending the moratorium beyond March the 10th.
March 1st.
Yeah, that is the deadline for the moratorium, so we're not taking something away from somebody else. We're just giving ourselves a little more time and the residents and public to come up with an idea that might work. And if it doesn't, too bad, we move on.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to defer to the 17th, and just for clarity's sake, with the expectation that people will submit in writing suggestions about a solution that they think would work prior to that meeting, preferably by Thursday, the 12th... of December, which is when we distribute written material in our handouts and information packet and all that kind of stuff. Okay, so we have that motion on the floor. And this is just a voice vote, because it's, could all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to one. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence from Kent and Kay Akerson, Susan Shulaw, Jackie Biggar, Matthew Loggie, Diana Harris, John Brandon, and Nancy Carlson?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Cole, seconded by Saleh. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Pauline, would you take this next item, please, while I step out?
Oh.
So you've got a public hearing.
Read it, and then, yep. Okay. Item number 12, the Scott Boulevard trunk sanitary sewer extension. It's a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property interests necessary for construction of the Scott Boulevard trunk sanitary sewer extension project. Open the public hearing.
Good evening, council. Scott Silver's Assistant City Engineer. Let me make sure we're on the right. Okay, so basically, the scope of this project is extend a 24-inch diameter sanitary sewer from the Iowa Interstate Railroad northerly along the north branch of Snyder Creek up to American Legion Road. The primary purpose, objective of this project is to support existing and proposed growth within the sewer shed, as well as to decommission the Windsor Ridge sanitary sewer lift station that was originally installed as a temporary lift station approximately 20 years ago. The estimated construction cost for the project is roughly 1.3 million. The schedule that we have outlined currently is, we're in the design development phase currently. We're planning to start right-of-way acquisitions just after the first year. It'll probably extend through June and the spring, planning on a bid letting in July, and then construction starting late next year in October and December timeframe. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Scott? Any questions from the audience? And anyone in the audience have any questions for Scott? Close the public hearing. Consider resolution.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Susan Memes, seconded by Saleh. Any discussion?
Hadn't heard of sewer shed before.
Say that 10 times.
No, please don't.
That's all the comments I have.
No further discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Cole?
Yes.
Memes? Yes. Saleh? Yes. Taylor? Yes. Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
All right, moving on to item 13, Prentice Street Replacement Bridge. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Prentice Street Bridge Replacement Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. Open the public hearing. Melissa, how are you?
Good.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening, council. I am Melissa Klow, Special Projects Administrator with the Engineering Division, currently working on the Prentice Street Bridge Replacement Project. We're looking at the bridge replacement over Ralston Creek with a triple eight-foot, eight-inch by 13-foot reinforced concrete box culverts. We had replaced Prentice Street from South Dubuque Street to just east of Ralston Creek, increased capacity of storm sewer along Prentice Street on the north side to reduce surcharging during large rain events. Will also improve sidewalk and ADA access in this area. We're looking at a 31-foot overall pavement width with 10-foot travel lanes. We do show your half width at 15 and a half feet, but we do have parking on the east side, or east, on the south side for eastbound traffic. We have six-foot sidewalks on the north and south sides of the roadway, and 80-foot existing right-of-way is typical in this area. During construction, we are proposing two phases, the east and the west, to allow access to all adjacent property owners during construction. During each of these phases, there will be a complete closure of the roadway during construction with pedestrian vehicular detours directed to East Court Street. Estimated project costs, total construction is $1,231,621. As you can see, 916, 732 will be from the Urban Bridge Fund. We have an agreement with the DOT. The rest will be supplied by local funds. And then our schedule, we completed design development in September, completed right-of-way acquisition this fall. Bid letting, plans will be available to contractors in early January. With, we'll take bids on January 21st, and then we'll construct, begin construction June 1st, completion by November. And we are done with our right-of-way acquisitions.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah. Those are complete. So if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions for Melissa? Don't see any, don't hear any. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to address this topic? I don't see anyone, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Memes. Council discussion? Hearing non. Roll call, please.
Memes? Yes. Saleh? Yes. Taylor? Yes. Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 14, Amendment to Foster Road Development Agreement.
This is a resolution approving First Amendment to Agreement for Private Redevelopment between City of Iowa City, Iowa, Foster Road Developers LLC, Vintage Cooperative of Iowa City, and Ewing Land Development and Services LLC. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Memes, seconded by Teague. Hi, Wendy.
Good evening, mayor. I'm Wendy Ford with Economic Development, or the Economic Development Coordinator. As you know, Foster Road is nearing completion, and the development agreement for it had called for a number of items to be complete, all of which are nearly complete, with one exception, and that is a segment of the sidewalk on the south side of Foster Road. On the north side, there's a new eight-foot sidewalk in place, and that will serve the new neighbors that'll be moving into the vintage, and those who would be served, or those who would be living in the townhomes to be developed on Foster Road, as well as provide the connectivity between Prairie Duchene and Dubuque Street. So staff felt that it would be okay to allow the completion of that south side segment to no later than May of 2022, which would be just in time for them to complete all requirements to be able to get the first rebate due in the TIF rebate agreement that we have with them. Now, should the townhomes that would be built on that lot, which is Lot 5, be completed earlier, of course, the developer would be required to complete that sidewalk on that south side at the same time. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is the main reason for this delay related to damage, potentially, if the sidewalk was there?
A number of things. Actually, there was a late spring for a late start in construction. There were some contractor delays, the developer has cited, as well as our very early winter we had this year, too. Another reason for thinking that it would be acceptable to delay would be just that, that should the developer complete that sidewalk before the townhomes that were designated for that lot are built, there's a high risk of damage to that, and the risk that they would have to redo the sidewalk in that segment.
Sound good?
Any further questions for Wendy?
Twelve years?
I think you're done, Wendy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council discussion?
Just makes sense, yeah, to not do it right now, wait for it.
Yeah, I think as long as it's in there, it should be fine.
Okay, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor? Yes. Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memes? Yes. Saleh? Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 15, Resolution Establishing the City of Iowa City's 2020 State of Iowa Legislative Priorities?
Nice.
It's a resolution establishing our legislative priorities.
Yeah.
Pretty simple. Good evening. Simon Andrew, Assistant to the City Manager. Your next item is your annual resolution for your main priorities at the state legislative session. We use this both to publicly state what the cities and councils' priorities are, and to help us guide our lobbyists throughout their work during the session in Des Moines.
Simon, let me interrupt you for a second. I'd like to get a motion to approve on the floor, and then you can keep on talking.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Moved by Memes, seconded by Cole.
It's almost like I've never been here before.
Yeah. Thank you.
As you know, we can expect surprises throughout the legislative session. We put these forward prior to the session, best as we can, anticipating what we would like to encourage for legislation. But each year, of course, there are a number of items that pop up that really become our main focus, that we did not anticipate heading into the year. As another reminder, the state legislature operates on a two-year cycle. This is the second year of the current General Assembly, so any bills last year that passed the funnel hurdles that did not ultimately get passed are still live pieces of legislation for this coming year. There are a couple items on here that are pretty standard, that we've had the last few years. We did add a few new ones this year. The first one is Support for Climate Action Initiatives. This is similar to one that the school district also put on their legislative priorities. And this is in response to our Declaration of a Climate Crisis, Climate Action Plan, everything that we've been talking about. So this is clearly one of our top priorities. There has been discussion throughout our Climate Action Plan process about our ability to control building codes and energy codes. So that would be something that we would be supportive of at the state this year. You had also received a communication from the university student government about move-in checklists. We did include this in our priorities as well. They have a more detailed proposal that they have sent you that was included in this packet as well, with some examples from other places in the country. We have reviewed this with staff, and we would be supportive of it as well. The next one that is new for this year, that was mentioned at the work session as well, is support legislation protecting the rights of manufactured housing residents. You had a pretty lengthy discussion at your work session, so not a whole lot of detail for me to go into there, but I expect Senator Wallace will be supporting or proposing legislation this year that we would be on board with. The last four you are familiar with from previous years, of course, backfill of payments from the state after commercial property tax reform is still incredibly important to us. It's $1.5 million a year, roughly. That is, say, equivalent to the operation of an entire fire station. So very important for our general fund budget. Supporting home rule authority for local governments, educational funding, and supporting the Metro Coalition and Iowa League of Cities are on their standard from previous years as well. Happy to answer any questions.
I note that the "supporting local educational institutions" actually reads "support the continued excellence of the state's primary, secondary, and higher education institutions", and advocate for additional education funding. That's the same language as before, isn't it?
Yes, yep. The same as in previous years. And so that includes, obviously, the University Kirkwood, primary and secondary.
Great. Any further questions for Simon?
And legislature kicks off January 13th. It is the first day of the session.
All right. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Oh, like Austin, maybe?
Logan, I just want to say thank you for including the move-in checklist proposal. I think it's just one way to help smooth out those tenant landlord relationships, get that mandated, to make sure everyone can be protected and people know their rights. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Council discussion?
I was really glad to see this listing. Thank the staff for putting that together. It's a great list of main focus items. Today, I had the great opportunity to attend the League of Women Voters Legislative Luncheon, and this is their list of priorities. They're not afraid to have a very lengthy list of priorities, although they're the first ones to say that a number of things on this list, they've been talking about and hoping for for a number of years. But there's some very good things, and some that sort of echo some of our priorities. But as the legislature spoke, I thought of a few other things that maybe don't necessarily need to be on our list, but it's things that I think our lobbyists might keep on the radar for us. There's big talk about the vaping, and that's been in the news a lot, and talk about having some potential legislation for that. And I was thinking about that, I thought, I don't know if we've discussed vaping. We've got all the anti-smoking laws in our buildings, et cetera, that we might start thinking about that also. And then the other issue, and we've gotten emails about this, or heard people speak in the audience about the hog confinement units, and I know that's more of the county issue, but we have heard from our folks that live, like on Rart Road, that if the wind is in the right direction, they can smell it, and they're concerned about a number of health issues, lung issues that folks are having. So I think that's another thing that our lobbyists, we don't necessarily need to put it on our list unless people would like to see those two items, but if they could keep on the radar for us and keep us posted on where they are with that.
Yeah, fair enough.
That's all.
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing non. Roll call, please.
Taylor? Yes. Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memes? Yes. Saleh? Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 16, Council Appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission in an at-large position. Could I have a motion? Oh, we hadn't discussed who to do, who to appoint. We had three applicants. I think there's a male requirement, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And all three of the applicants are, happened to be male. So Zach Biltar, Michael Hadju, Hadju, and Austin Wu have applied. I would personally like to recommend Austin Wu.
I agree.
I also agree strongly.
I agree.
I don't know about that, Austin. I'm not quite sure.
I mean, he's always at our meetings and has great input, and I think he'd be positive for this commission.
Someone else says...
I just don't, the obvious, that if he's on the commission, he's going to have to not participate in anything that comes to you from the commission.
Sure.
I wondered about that.
Sure.
He can still be our liaison for UIG, but...
Yeah, it's just a specific...
Yes.
Would anybody like to recommend either of the other five applicants?
The finals, Austin.
All right, hearing no one. Could I have a motion to appoint Austin Wu to the Historic Preservation Commission?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Cole, seconded by Saleh. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item 17, Announcement of Vacancies. Previous. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Senior Center Commission. Applicants for that position must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 10th of this year. We have one vacancy to fill a five-year term to the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term to the Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the East College Street District, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the Woodlawn District, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, January the 14th, 2020. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence from Suzanne Bentley, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item nineteen, city council information. Let's start somewhere. Where are we going to start? Let's see. Let's start with Rockney and move to the right.
I don't have anything to share for this meeting. I'll go to the next one.
Okay.
So just stay tuned.
All right. John?
I'll just mention that Climate Action Expo was a really delightful experience a couple of weeks ago. It was a really successful event, entertaining and informative.
Lot of energy, too.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. Just wanted to interrupt. Got two or three things. I wanted to thank all the different organizations who put on Thanksgiving dinners. I had the pleasure of helping with a brand-new one at Big Grove this year. A big group of restaurant owners took advantage of one of the spaces that they own, along with a number of other people in the community, and had a great event for homeless and food insecure individuals in the community. So it was a great event, and I know a lot of other places did the same thing the week before or that week. Just wanted to mention, had a couple of really positive comments recently from people in the community about our animal shelter. So I just wanted to say thank you to, you know, our staff who do a great job down there. In fact, as I was coming into the meeting tonight, I ran into a couple of our officers, Captain Brotherton, one of the other officers, who'd just been down there taking pictures. They're doing a cops and kittens photos, I think, for Facebook or something.
Don't tell my wife about that, because she'll probably end up in our house.
So they had just come back, and they were kidding about that. As John mentioned, the Climate Expo was great. What a great crowd. And a lot of people at Big Grove that night and a lot of people that I haven't seen, you know, involved in some great presentations. So thank you to everybody for that. I think almost all of us or most of us were at the city employee lunch, appreciation lunch down at Terry True Blood. As always, that's a great event to see staff. The last thing I just want to mention, I do want to take a couple of minutes. A week or so ago, there was a stakeholders' meeting for Cross Park Place, which is housing for some of our chronically homeless, previously chronically homeless. And there was more data that I could share, but I'll just share one piece with you tonight. They started housing individuals in there in January of 2019, so it has been just under a year that we've had individuals in there. There has been very little turnover, I think, turnover of one person. So the data I'm going to give you is based on 23 people. They looked at the number cumulative number of nights in jail per quarter for, I believe it was about two years prior to Cross Park Place opening. And those cumulative number of nights in jail for those 23 people per quarter average was 107 nights, I believe it was, per quarter. After the opening of Cross Park Place, those numbers, give me just one minute here, because I wrote these down. It was 73 nights. No, it was 177 nights prior to being housed. Okay? So those 23 people cumulatively spent 107 nights in jail every quarter average for about two years. In the first three quarters since the housing has been opened, in the first quarter, the cumulative number of nights in jail went from 107 down to 73. In the second quarter, down to five, and in the third quarter, down to eight.
Wow. Great.
Look at just that one statistic and how much money is being saved by keeping people out of jail. They also had a number of statistics, which I didn't get the slideshow, and on healthcare, keeping people out of the emergency room. In some cases, more visits to the hospital, not to the emergency room, but actually people getting better healthcare. And in one case, and maybe to me the most impactful case, was the one individual who has moved out, who has been homeless for decades. And when you're homeless, you cannot apply for Medicaid because you don't have an address, or at least not for assisted living. That individual came into Park Place, Cross Park, got a permanent address, had staff there between a psychiatrist that comes over from UIHC half-day-a-week, a nursing practitioner who comes over half-day-a-week, and their caseworkers that they have. They worked with this individual, and now that he had permanent housing, a residential address, he was able to apply, and he is now in assisted living, getting the kind of care that he actually needs after decades on the street. So Cross Park Place is doing a fantastic job. There was a great number of people there who are still helping or helped to get it started, and was just a great event. So thank you to Chrissy Canganelli and all the people at Shelter House that have been involved with this. Representation from Iowa Finance Authority were there as well. I think they got $7 million from Iowa Finance Authority. So just a fantastic project, and so it was a great, great time to be there.
It's great news, and it's precisely what we hoped would happen.
Yes.
Bravo.
Echo Susan's comments about the employee appreciation lunch. That's always a lot of
fun. It was great this time to be able to circulate and move table-to-table and chat with the different folks, especially the transit employees, to see their feelings on the study and survey that's going on. So that was, that was great. Then the next day, Friday, she talked about the dinners, attended a wonderful community dinner at Parkview Church. It was a great event. I think Bruce was there. I think Ma's maybe also, with wonderful food and had, there was a couple hundred people at least. I have trouble estimating numbers, but it was at least that. It was a joint effort with the South District Neighborhood Association and other organizations, and it just was really well-planned and went off, went off really, really well. And then the other thing, have a prop here. Last Wednesday evening, I became grandma for the third time, and the mayor set a precedent when his granddaughter was born of bringing chocolates. Well, compliments of our wonderful Belux Bakery that we have here in Iowa City. Want folks to help themselves to It's a Boy cookies.
It was a boy. It is a boy, so.
Give me five of them.
[laughing]
Thanks.
Congratulations.
And that's it. That's all I have.
Congratulations, Pauline.
Yeah, congrats.
And he's beautiful.
Yes. A lot of the things that has been mentioned, the employee appreciation lunch, the Iowa City Climate Expo, thanks to all of the staff for all they do for the city. And the expo was really well-done. So thanks to all the staff that created that event. I did attend the South District, and that was a great event as well. It was well-attended. You're talking about a great time of just being amongst the community and just relaxing, and I think that's what I really loved about that evening. I was, I did want to just, and I'm so happy you mentioned about Cross Park Place. That is phenomenal news. The other thing that I will say is Housing First model, that's something that we really should be looking at in the future, because it really does save on the, in the future. It really does. So I'm happy to hear that report. Talking about climate action, so I have to give a shout-out, and I did this on KXIC as well, to Stephanie Bowers, because I was in a meeting, and when we're talking about climate action, you know, even the smallest things and smallest changes, we're in this meeting and we're like sharing a paper, you know, of some material. And she said, you know, in efforts of climate action, I only printed off a few, but it really does take small little things to kind of just trickle our mind to think about climate action. Bringing your own coffee cup, you know, to work or, or, you know, it's small things like that that will really resonate for the greater good of climate action. So hats off to Stephanie Bowers and all of the city staff that is doing similar things. I know that we're all aware of the childcare crisis within Johnson County, and so yesterday I was a part of a work group, and there's definitely some movement and some ideas and some ways that we're trying to move forward with doing the, with bringing an end to the crisis or bringing solutions. And so yesterday we did have some of the city staff, because the city staff has a lot of information and knowledge and ways to support business owners as well as individuals that receive housing-type supports. And so I'm amazed at all that our city does throughout our community, and so I'm looking forward to some great solutions in, you know, with the childcare crisis. And when you're talking about entrepreneurs, there is a lot that needs to go into that conversation, such as like the fire department and the fire code, the building code, you know, and so all that's been kind of been at play. So I'm looking forward to more about the childcare crisis within our community and finding solutions. So just wanted to make mention of that as well tonight.
A quick comment about Housing First. I think it was six years ago, we asked Chrissy Canganelli to brief us on Housing First as a model. She persuaded us that it was really a good thing to do. That is why we have helped support the Cross Park Place, because she made that presentation to us, and it was so compelling, so persuasive.
Yep. Great.
Okay. It's my turn, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I really don't have a lot to report. I don't even remember what happened last week, but for the coming week, tomorrow, I will receive an award. I will take the prize home from, you know, Little Village for Best Advocate for Social Justice. And I'll be invited by the, I guess, the reader. And this will be tomorrow, cocktail party at 1:26 at 7:00 p.m. Encourage everyone to come. I guess last year, you were there, right?
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. And on the six, nothing, seven, on the seven, I will be attending the Presidential Forum and City Rabbit at Veterans Memorial Coliseum. This is held by the semester locust 238. A lot of candidates for president will be there. I encourage everyone to come and explore them. And also, we have some local, I guess, things going on with presidents. I guess everybody knows about that. Maybe you can go and discover them. And I think that's all. No, on the 11, we're going to attend in the sync Iowa City Lunch, or that the mayor said. This will be at 11:30 a.m. And that's all I have.
Okay. So on the 20th of November, I helped read names on World AIDS Day. It's really pleasing to do because it was not freezing cold or raining, and because of the topic itself. You've already mentioned the employee appreciation lunch, Climate Action Expo. They were great. Some of you may know that I had an exit, quote, "exit interview" with Aaron Scheinblum of KC RGTV9 on the 22nd, and it was broadcast, I don't know, maybe a week later or something like that, on my birthday, actually, come to think of it. I was pleasing to do that. We did it right here. I attended a meeting of the Refugee Alliance on the 26th. I plan to participate in the Bravo Awards event and look forward to handing out awards to people who are very, very deserving of the Iowa City Awards. I intend to participate in the Government Leadership Program's Government Day event, thanks to Jeff's invitation, and that's going to be on the 12th of December. And I plan to attend the CWJ Allies Meeting on the 11.
Thirteen, or 11?
I think it's 11, but you know, if it's the 13th.
Friday the 13th.
Good. Oh, yeah, it says 13th, and I read 11 in my eyes. And last, I have an opportunity to attend President Mary Harold's Holiday Gathering at Kennick Stadium on the 14th. Looking forward to that. So that's it for me.
I just forget to tell that on the 14th, there is a legislative meeting at Iowa State Capitol for the Mobile Home Park. If somebody wants to come and attend, it is at 1 o'clock to 4:00.
Good deal. Okay.
We skipped item 18.
Sorry?
We skipped item 18.
We did?
Well, that's, all right. Thank you. So let's go to item 18.
Community comment.
Community comment. Brandon, did you want to speak about something?
I love all you cool and groovy people. Keep being cool and groovy.
Okay.
Austin?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Austin. Of course, I knew you wanted to do that.
Hi. Yeah, I'm back. Austin Wu, UIG Government City Liaison. Let's see. First things, personal matter, I think I want to offer a couple of quick clarifications about some of my earlier comments about the rental permit moratorium. I didn't intend to come across as anti-density. Density is good. I think anyone with a basic understanding of economics knows that when demand is high in a constrained market, increasing supply is a pretty good thing to do. But I think one question that is worth asking is what the price point is to some of that new supply coming in. I've heard from various sources of vacancy rates of up to 40% of some of these new places, and I don't think we should expect some of these new developments to age into affordability anytime soon. So I think when it comes to new student housing, density is good, but sometimes it's worth asking, housing for whom? What kind of students are we looking for? I think there's an article in The Atlantic way back in like 2013 about these luxury dorms that were coming online back then, and someone in the student housing, like specialist in the industry, says something along the lines of students will live in closets if you can get the price point down. And I find that also to be a pretty true sentiment among people I know. So that's the clarification I want to say. Let's see, I'd like to thank all of you for your vote and my appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you very much. And then this is the stuff I actually had prepared for tonight. So there's a couple of events coming up in the last weeks of the semester. The Eighth Annual Mirage will be on Friday, 6th December, in Iowa Memorial Union, beginning from 9:00 p.m. It'll feature an amateur drag competition and professional drag queens and kings, as well as a condom casino, infrastravaganza, and free rapid HIV testing from Johnson County Public Health. It's a good event that promotes LGBTQ pride and sexual health, so I encourage anyone interested in those areas to attend. And the UI Gardeners will be hosting their annual greenhouse, open house, on Sunday, the 8th of December, at the Biology Building East Lobby at 2:00 p.m. The event will showcase their greenhouse and hydroponic system, and will have trivia and snacks. I think both of them have Facebook events, so if you feel so inclined, you can go online and hit that interested button. Thanks.
Thanks, Austin. I apologize for not...
No worries.
...giving you a chance to speak. Jeff?
And just real quick, for your next meeting, we are going to have a reception for Jim and Rockney at 4:00, so hopefully you can make it early, and certainly the public's welcome to attend. And then right after that, we are going to have a very quick work session with some of our members of our state delegation. They do have a 5:30 event over at the university, so they're only going to be able to stick around for about 20 minutes, but want a chance for you all to briefly mention to them the priorities that you just approved tonight. So think about those one or two things you really want to communicate to that delegation, and we'll accomplish that on the 17th.
Great. Thanks.
I was just going to say thanks for your support and presence at some of these recent staff-planned events. So, thanks.
Governor?
I just wanted to note, with respect to Pauline, your vaping comment, we did back in 2015 add electronic cigarettes/vaping to our prohibitions on smoking in public places.
Kelly? Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.